Hi Dave. Hi Robin.
Trying to turn things on here.
All right, I can see and hear you. That's great. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
All right.
Change my view. I don't have anyone else.
Uh, we have Robin in the panel so far, and we have two attendees who I believe are gonna speak during public comment.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
There we go. Hi Robin.
Hello? Um. Dave, how did you? Fuzzy out the background?
How did I what?
Make your background fuzzy.
I went into settings, uh, which I found. When I logged on and went into video. And there are about twenty options and, uh, I could hardly see myself under low light, so. I. Punch that up. But I went into settings and there was video, audio, and a whole bunch of stuff, but you gotta be able to find the right menu.
Okay.
Robin, it's not always obvious how to find that stuff, so I, I certainly. Can relate.
Yeah, I. We'll, we'll see if I can find it.
So Dave, I'm letting Cheryl in as a panelist, and there's Paul, but I'm not seeing any other OSAC members in the. Uh, in the, in the waiting room, I guess.
Okay, and my screen says there are ten participants. There's Ms. Satella.
Yep, and there's Andrea. Yes, and the other participants, they're in the attendees list, which means they're not panelists. But when we have public comment, they'll be allowed to talk. So they're just not on the actual panel.
Okay, we'll do that, uh, early in the agenda.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. He, and Paul's, Paul's somewhere in the ether right now. He's here, kinda.
Oh, let me turn my video on.
There he is.
I'm here too, Cheryl.
Yeah, well, we've got a quorum. We've got four out of six, uh, full members with Paul as an alternate. So we're okay there. Does that sound right? Those to me. Okay. Well, welcome, everybody. I think that may be all we have. I, I know that Judith Chandler. Um, is out of town, and she did send me an email. I appreciated that courtesy, so we're not waiting for her. And, uh, I don't know. About Judy or, or Nancy. Nancy has an alternate, maybe just out of touch. Uh, that's one reason why she's an alternate. Uh, but Judy, I'm not sure. I had sent Judy an email. Uh, prompting her on a couple of the agenda items, uh, and I did not get a response, so I don't know. So why don't we move along? Um. Let's see, in terms of attendance, uh, just to make the, the record, we have Cheryl Klein and Robin Kovats, uh, Andrea Satella. And myself, four regular members, Paul Arling House as an alternate, and Jillian Rossi is the Parks Director and our, uh. Technical moderator today. So we do not have Judy Karnak, uh, or Judith Chandler, uh, or Nancy Wilson. I looked into how we're supposed to take care of, uh, of Paul and Tim Beeson. Tim Beeson's term, uh, was up last month. So he is no longer a member. That means we have an opening for a full member. Uh, we have two alternates, Paul and Nancy. Uh, Nancy is, uh, traveling quite a bit and would prefer not to be. A full member is, okay, thank you, Andrea, for nodding. I appreciate that. Make sure I got that right. Uh, I don't wanna s- uh, step on that if I got it wrong. Um, so for Paul, I, uh, I think the process is we need a motion. To recommend that the city council, um, elevate him from an alternate to a full member. And Paul, do we have your permission to do that?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, good. Can I have a motion from a member?
Oh, make a motion.
All right, Andrea moves to recommend approval by the city council, and a second by who?
Not, and, that wasn't Andrea.
Oh, it wasn't?
Well, Rob, Robin and Andrea kinda did it at the same time, raised our hand, either one, and then, uh, so you can make, leave Andrea and I'll second. That's Robin.
Okay, I'm sorry, I saw the hand go up and that's. Yeah, that's, this is, uh. So come to our next thing. So, so we need to, any, any more discussion on that? If not, let's go ahead and vote, and, uh, all in favor of the motion to recommend approval of Paul, uh, as a full member, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
We got four, okay, four voting and four approved, so that passes unanimously. And Jillian, how do we do that? Do I, do we need to send a letter or something to the clerk?
Yep, so Dave, the next step will be a memo from you on behalf of OSAC to the city clerk. Uh. Or actually to city council, but you'll send it to the city clerk, and they will add it to the next regular city council session for final approval.
And Paul, you do not need to attend that one. I understand that's kind of a perfunctory. Approval, cause, okay, then I will do that. That's on my list. Next.
Dave, Dave, just, uh, on the, on the members, I didn't hear TJ. In the list, is he?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry, goodness, I've. Even circled his name to make sure I said it, but I didn't. So right now, yeah, we're missing Judy, uh, Karnak tonight, um. TJ Maltese. And, um. Judith as our liaison, not a full member, but liaison. Okay, thank you though. Yeah, guys, don't hesitate to correct me. We're all in this together. Um, we are gonna need a vice chair. Uh, I have not talked to anybody about that. Uh, I know Judy's out and so is TJ. But, uh, I think maybe the way to do that is, um, not to put anyone on the spot, is to. Ask you guys to email me with suggestions and, uh, that way. If, uh, someone wants to put their name forward, uh, we know we have their consent. We're not just volunteering somebody. Is that sound okay? Okay, then I'll, I'll press you guys, cause we do wanna have a full complement. Of a chair and a vice chair. Um. If. The minutes were, uh, uh, the, the way the agenda's put together is, um, I made suggestions and Jillian commented on them. And then they went to Alicia Stokes. And somehow, the April eighth meeting from a year ago has appeared. It was a very short special meeting to approve the purchase of the tow of the Black Canyon. Open space property. Uh, that was the only item on the agenda. It was an executive session. I was not there. Um. Were any of you present? At, you must have, I guess we can bring it up, take a look at it, but we're being asked to approve those minutes. So let's, let's take a look in the packet. I'm just scrolling down. Yeah, there it is, uh, Cheryl Klein, Robin, and Andrea were there. But hey, we're pretty good. Also Judy. And Tim Beeson, so Tim is not with us, and neither is Judy tonight, so we've got the three of you. Do the three of you have any comments on these minutes? Hearing, hearing none, can one of you three make a motion to approve the minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty-four? Who's that gonna be?
Uh, this is Andrea. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
And a second? By Rob, well, we got, I saw Robin's hand first, Cheryl, so.
Okay.
That way, so we got. All right, I'm not gonna vote because I was not present, um. And so if the three of you would vote, uh, on the motion to approve the April eighth minutes, go ahead.
However, however. I just saw. It says April eight, twenty twenty-five in the. I think I'm looking at the right thing here. Yeah, down, at the top, it says. April eight, twenty twenty-four. Oh, no, no.
Yeah, I, I think I did the same thing. You're. It's like, what?
Down there where it says committee member Karnak moved to promote alternate committee member Bremner to a regular voting member for the April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Meeting.
Okay.
Shouldn't that say twenty twenty-four?
Sounds like it. Looks like we got an error on that. Okay, that's in item A on the April eighth minutes. Any other corrections? Thank you, Cheryl. Andrea, is your motion okay to approve with that correction?
Yes.
Okay, and Robin, is that all right with you? Okay, so then the motion is to approve the April eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes with that correction in item A? All in favor? All right, the three voting members approved that. So we'll move on. We have, uh, Jillian, I'm gonna turn it over to you to let you manage this. We have some public comment. And some folks in the gallery, and so we need to recognize them and bring them up. So Jillian, how do we do that?
Well. I think a lot of these folks tonight, Dave, they're actually here for an agenda item. Uh, because we, we do have the Bill Bauer Trail Development on the agenda.
Yep.
So I think y- your next step is to ask if anyone is here for a non-agenda item, and then they would raise their hand, all allow them to talk. And then when we move on to the agenda items they're here for, that's when the other folks would, would get to talk.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, since Jillian just asked that question. Is anybody responding on a non-agenda item? Give you a minute to manage that.
I'm not seeing any hands up.
Okay.
In the audience right now.
Then we'll move on, um. This seems like a bit of a formality, but I, I think it allows the committee members to have a bigger role in the agenda. Uh, the way we're supposed to do this is you guys have looked at the agenda. And I'm, I'm to ask if you have any objections, uh, to the agenda, or is there something you wanna table? Guess we could do that later on. But. This is apparently the way the city council does it. It's the way we're supposed to do it, is ask if there's any changes to the agenda. So to move along, okay, hearing none, we'll accept the agenda. I don't think we need a motion. I think that's just overly formalistic, so let's just move on.
Well. Since. Oh.
Who wants a motion?
Since it says elect vice chair, but we're not actually electing them, do we need to say? Discuss the election of the vice chair?
Well, we're, yeah, we're, 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 okay. We're gonna pass on that, but I understand your point. Is change it to discuss the election of a vice chair. We've done that, but we're gonna change the agenda. Any other changes to the agenda? All right, let's rely on that suggestion from Cheryl, and we'll move on. Um. We have minutes from the, uh. Park and Recreation Advisory Board from their March three. Um. It's not for us to approve, it's just for us to be aware of that. Is it, did that? Prompt anything for discussion? They've, uh, proposing, perhaps proposing to rename Higginbotham Flats. And then some other maintenance issues. Anything? Okay, well, hearing none. We will pass on the review of the, uh. The Park and Recreation Advisory Board minutes and move on to Black Canyon Open Space. Um. The agenda item here is just to keep this, uh, at the fore and to make sure. We're starting to plan for the next steps. Um. Fire mitigation and trail construction. In our last meeting, there was some discussion that we. If, if my memory's correct, uh, and it may not be, but that probably made more sense to do the homeless cleanup. Uh, and the fire mitigation efforts before doing the trail construction. Does that seem to be the proper method for you guys? What are you thinking, process, rather? Okay.
Yeah, it sounds correct.
Okay, thank you. So then we're. It, that's I. I've had a, I've met with a number of people in the city, and I. I, um, I'm frustrated, cause I didn't seem to mean like anybody's taking the lead on fire mitigation, um. I, I can't tell who's doing what, or who's supposed to do what, and who's supposed to coordinate with whom. Um. So I'll keep trying, um.
So Dave, I'll, I'll jump in real quick. That's on my list. That's on my list to collaborate with MSFD. To get quotes on fire mitigation. Um, I will say it is not at the very top of my list, which is why it hasn't been done yet. Um. I have a few larger projects to wrap up. Right now, but what I will do is reach out to Mike Willie, um, cause he does have some fire mitigation connections per his, his role. With the city, um, and get that rolling this week. So I, that's on me. I don't have the, the quotes yet for you.
Well, who, who is, yeah, go ahead, Robin.
Well, I, I, I read part of the fire mitigation. booklet that they sent out, and I, I didn't get as far as I wanted, but. Uh. Wasn't there? A mention about what areas were top priorities, so. Is Black Canyon, I think, I think maybe Black Canyon was mentioned as one of the more top priorities. I'm, I'm just trying to remember back. Some of these areas, so I, I, I mean, I'm very, um, uh. Interested in knowing what are the top. Areas to start with.
Well, from my reading, you're correct, um, that the open space properties as a whole were considered priority properties. And. Black Canyon also seemed to rise to the top. Because it's available. It's the appropriate time, because we'd like to move on to the trail construction to develop the park, so the timing's right. And then there was also commentary that it's, it's next to some residences. Well, it's. It's not. I mean, the, the nearest residences are hundreds of yards away. Um, but that is what the report said, um. But the, Mike Willie is. Has identified this as one of the top candidate properties. So I, I, I think we should run with it, uh, unless we have something else to propose. Another parcel. But it doesn't knock out the other parcels. But I, I, again, I don't know what the capacity is, uh, for the city to re. To request bids. How many, how many parcels do we wanna look at? How many are efficient to look at? And then, of course, budgeting. How much is it gonna cost and? What are, what are the available funds? Well, it sounds like then, uh, Jillian, if you will run with that, um. I, I don't know who's doing the prescription. For what this is gonna look like. After the mitigation, how much is being removed? Mike made some general comments, uh, which is maybe all he can do in that report. I thought his report was well done. And maybe that's as specific as he can get. It just doesn't give me much comfort. I don't have much confidence of knowing what's gonna be done, and. If we're the members of the OSAC who are gonna have to defend what the fire mitigation is. I'm not real comfortable doing that, but I don't see an alternative. Anybody got different ideas on that?
And Dave, when we get the quotes, it'll also include a scope of work, so it'll show, um, the acreage, what they're planning on doing, how they'll, they'll approach the project. So it won't just be a number. It will be an outline of, of what the fire mitigation is actually going to look like.
Okay. Um. Uh, I'm gonna bring this up just because I think it's quite related, is the, uh, the Deer Valley Park. Is that, uh, last acreage, is that done now? The last couple acres? Do you know if they finished that?
So the contractors are finished, but they did, um, they didn't, they weren't able to do the entire property. They skipped some areas that were close to property lines. Due to concern that they would cross property lines, so the city, um, our forestry division is actually gonna go in and complete the mitigation. Cause there is some brush removal needed right along the edge, so it's, it's ninety-five percent there, but we're gonna go in and finish that last five percent this spring.
Right, well, I, I. I really implore, uh, all of us on the committee to go walk that property. It, it is, it is technically a park parcel, but. It was just done, um. In the last couple of weeks, the last few acres to the south, and Jillian, when was the main porce- parcel done? Was it last fall? It's fairly recent.
We had the, the central parcel done last fall, and then two years before that, the lower parcel was done. So it's been a phased project, yeah.
Okay, but we really ought to walk it, so that, um. Because that, that's a mixed conifer, juniper, but it was mainly scrub oak, and if, so if we wanna see what it looks like, that's what we need to go look at. So please put that on your list, a drive up there. Take you about twenty minutes to walk the whole thing. So, um. Anything else on, so trail construction of Black Canyon, really, we're, we're bumping that off, just. Kind of out of practicality until. Next year, or is that? Is that just, that's just kind of? The way it works? Anybody see an alternative to that? Yeah.
Is, is there the opportunity to combine? Or I guess. Kind of coordinate the fire mitigation with the trail construction? Though, I mean, in the sense, the trails are gonna go in and create corridors through that area. And. You know, it, it just, I, I don't know, is, you know, can we, can we kinda leverage that and clear, use the, the trail corridors as areas that be clear? Uh, making stuff more accessible. It, it just may be worth asking, um, if we, if we're quoting with someone for fire mitigation. That they make, make sure they have the master plan for trails and see if there's any, any benefit of those being, um. I guess. Taken into account.
Well, I think you're, you're coming at it from making sure that. If there's an opportunity to clear a trail corridor. They go ahead and do it. I guess I'm coming at it from the, the more negative side of, I don't want them to eviscerate. Totally denude the area. The areas where the trail's supposed to go. I mean, the trail does wrap around some. If you will, signature trees or signature features, and, um. So I have the same concern, just a slightly. Different perspective on it. So Jillian, can we? Make sure they're aware of that, the master plan?
Yeah, we can do that, and I do want us to keep in mind that in the master plan. I, I'm pretty sure we have it in there based on city council feedback, that we wanted the trail construction to be done by hand. By hand crews, and most likely the fire mitigation will not be done solely by hand crews, so I, I'm just hesitant about. Asking them to do some of the trail construction, but we could have them keep it in mind, um.
I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the construction. It was more of where they're removing. The vegetative material. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just gotta make sure they're aware of that.
Plan.
Yeah. Andrea, I gotta ask you to adjust your camera, because you might be raising your hand and I can't see it, cause I, I'm seeing the top of your forehead. There we go.
Yeah, I'm eating dinner, so I'll switch it back in a minute.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on that item? On Black Canyon. I'll continue to work with Jillian and, uh. And try to support her on that. Um. Do you guys remember the name confusion issue? Apparently it's not a big deal. Jillian, what do, what do you know on that? This came up at city council from Nancy Fortin.
So I know based on, um, an email, an email exchange with Colorado Springs, they're not really concerned or tied to. Their name, their, the, their parcel, I guess, Black Canyon Quarry Open Space. They're willing to change it during the master plan process for that property. They understand it might be confusing in the future, having two Black Canyon open spaces. Right next to each other, um, but I will say it is not their priority right now to change the name, um, but it's something they're open to in the future. And that's, that's what I have from them right now.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, you, you handled that professionally, and we did it with courtesy to let them know. Just wanna make sure you guys are aware, we're ahead of you on this. Uh, heads up. So we'll see, okay. Let's see, um, if there's nothing more on that, uh, let's turn to the Bill Bauer, uh, park and the potential for a trail development. Um. What we do have, um. Some members of the public who wanna speak on this. I wanna make a few prefatory comments, um. From, from the. Previous meetings we've had on the Bill Bauer Park. And also discussing the difficulties involved. Um, I will tell you, I'm not hearing a lot of support within this committee to develop that trail. Um. For three or four different reasons. And it occurred to me that. At some point, we need to know whether we've got support within the committee and some passion to push this. Otherwise, it's not gonna happen. Um, it's not gonna bubble up past this committee unless someone, uh, or perhaps multiple people are willing. Uh, to push for it, because it's something they want, or they believe in, or what have you. Um. So I, I'll circle back to that after the comments. But, um. I mean, I will tell you, I initially was quite interested in the concept of a trail, but, uh, the, the prospect of a trail on that property is pretty daunting. Technically, and also because of the space limitation, because of the pinch point, which is not resolved. Um. And then. So just to give you my heads up on it, I'm thinking, yes, we could do the survey to see if there is some real interest in the community to do this or not. Uh, I'm just not hearing it, uh, and, and I could just be tone deaf, and I'm just not picking it up. But I wanted to share my thoughts to you guys, um, about that. Cause on, on Black Canyon, for example, there were a number of us who were really interested in pursuing that, and we threw our energy behind. Cause on on Black Canyon, for example, there were a number of us who were really interested in pursuing that and we threw our energy behind it and. Uh, most of the committee members who are wholeheartedly supporting that. That's what it takes for it to happen. So I don't know. So Jillian, why don't you recognize um? Uh, the members of the public who want to speak on this, uh, we do want to ask you to make your comments brief. Or submit them in writing, because if you submit them in writing, we can really follow them in a lot more detail. We did get an email. Uh, from Neil Minch. That's N E A L E Minch, M I N C H, uh, which is nice and detailed and very specific. Uh, it came in after. The uh. Came in on Friday, so it was after the agenda was already out, but I will make sure that gets shared with everyone. Is Neil here today?
He is. Um, and anyone, any attendees who would like to speak on this topic, if you could go ahead and raise your hand, that way I know to unmute. You, that would be helpful. Okay, perfect. And I'm gonna have Neil go first.
Okay, and then, again, I know I can talk too much, but Neil, before you start, I want to set the stage. What we have. Is a recent acquisition of additional land on the north end of the Bill Bauer Park. And there is some uh, proposal to do a trail down through that ravine. Members of the committee have walked it. And uh, we've talked to a few of the adjacent property owners. And that's about as far as we are. So Neil, uh, tell us what your thoughts are.
Okay, first of all, um, can can you hear me okay?
Thank you, I can.
Good, good. So thank you for being volunteers. Um, I'm on a couple of boards as well, so I understand the sacrifice. Um. I live at 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 one five one Clarksley Road, so I'm on the west side of the canyon. In fact, I think I saw you when you you were doing your sort of walkthrough um, last autumn, perhaps, or last. Summer. I remember seeing a group of people, yeah, walking up. Um, yeah, I think the 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 concerns that I I have are fairly well articulated in in the email. Um, it's really disruption to what is currently a pretty wild um, area. With a lot of um. Um. Mammals and a lot of um, of birds. Um, particularly. In May, this is migration time. We get a lot of birds that. Stay down in the canyon and then come up to to the feeders, which a number of us have. In our backyards. Um. And. You know, usually a rule of thumb for corridor. Between humans and having um, uh, a boundary. For wildlife is a good hundred meters. Um, if you're inside of that, then it's gonna be disruptive. Um, so I'm, I I I'm not personally supportive for those two sort of reasons. Another is um, I'm I'm concerned more about the. Uh, making a pathway for people coming up from Mantoo Avenue. Um, my neighbor was at his house was invaded. Um, later at night. By someone who broke in through the back door. Um, and luckily he wasn't shot. Cause it was uh, in the middle of 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 the the night and he woke him up. Um, police record and everything. So we have a a concern with it being a corridor coming up. Uh, for whether it's homeless people or people who are just um, looking for a place to hang out. Um. And then um, I think that's it. That I think summarizes it. I um. Everything else is in the email. I should point out, I do trail maintenance. With both Mantoo Cats and Brimfee. So um, I use these trails a lot. Um, I'm a big, a big, you know, you know, user. But this one, I don't think I would use because it wouldn't actually get me anywhere. So. That's all I've got.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Neil. And thank you for the email. Again, I will make sure that gets shared. Uh, Neil, I gotta do that through a certain process so that.
I understand, I understand.
I'll make sure that gets that gets done. Thanks for participating tonight.
Okay.
Who else do we have, Jillian?
All right, I'm gonna have Jess Wilson go next.
Jess, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Jess Wilson. I live at one thirty Palisade Circle in Manitou Springs. Um, first, I just want to thank thank the OSAC for, you know, letting us talk and. Discuss this project. Me and some other neighbors did other another pub- public comment in October. Um, so. Since the last, since your last OSAC meeting, I have talked to about. Uh, personally, I've talked to about a dozen neighbors. That all are against this Bill Bauer project. Um, they have similar concerns that I do. Um. First and foremost is the disruption of the animal habitats. Um, last week. Crystal Hills um, on their Facebook page, they noted like mountain lion in the area, bears in the area, bobcats. We have a tremendous amount of wildlife that is down in that rav- ravine. Um. And I really don't want that ravine disturbed to disturb their habitats. So that's my first concern, along with the environmental concerns of. Going through there and having humans. Um, you know, affect the area. And then. Furthermore. Um, as some other neighbors have stated, I'm I'm not really sure. Who would use the trail. Um, I would not feel comfortable having my son or daughter walk in that trail because of the wildlife. Um, and. The fact that the trail doesn't connect to another trail, it just seems. Um. It just doesn't really seem like it would. Be that useful, considering it's about the same. Um, if you go from the bottom of the hill and use the road, it's about the same length. Um. And then.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jess. Can you say that again? I just couldn't catch the comparison you made.
Yeah, so in one of your OSAC meetings, um, it was discussed from the trail from under the underpass. Um, the trail that you guys were looking at is almost the same distance as if you would just take the road up and go to Bill Bauer.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I got it.
Um, and then. As you guys were talking about fire mitigation and, you know, talking about about Black Canyon. Um, that is one of my absolute most concerns is um, the risk, the fire risk associated with. Putting in a trail there. Um, how are fire trucks? Like, how will fire be mitigated, first of all? And then also, you know, with homeless encampments, I know. My husband has personally like went down into the ravine from the back of our property and has found encampments. I um, in previous OSAC meetings, even your committee members have talked whenever. They walked the trail to kind of clear brush and kind of check out the area. That several homeless encampments. They found as they were just um, you know, doing like a cert, you know, checking out the site. So that is absolutely my biggest concern. Um, is the homeless and the possibility of warming fires. And that type of situation, if you open up that area.
Thank you.
Um, like I said, so I've talked to about a dozen neighbors and. Um. There's just. Not the support. Um, no one has told me that they would like this trail. Um, and then all the neighbors that I've talked to are the ones that are. Um, around the ravine, that border, the ravine of the project. So I just want to thank you for um, listening and. Um, wanting community input. I absolutely appreciate that. And yeah, those are my closing comments. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming back and staying tuned on this. Jillian?
All right. Yeah, uh, Randy Zimdahl.
And Randy, can you spell your name for us? For the record?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you. Yeah, you go ahead and give us your spell your name and your give us your address, if you would, please.
Randy's the easy part. Zimdahl, Z I M D A H L.
Thank you.
I live at sixteen Mountain View Road. I'm right at the head of the canyon. And uh, Neil and Jess both have covered the things that I'd like to talk about. And. We have, I've lived here since nineteen ninety-six and I love seeing the bears. I love the bobcats that come up out of the canyon. I heard about a mountain lion just down the block just last week. I did not get to see it. Um, we have all kinds of birds that do come up out of there and feed on our bird feeders here. I'm very concerned about fire. Um, not just fire from homeless encampments, but just fire coming up that canyon for any reason, because there is a lot of dead, a lot of dead uh. Dead growth ready to burn at any time. Uh, I think the wind is usually prevailing from behind me, so it might not come up the canyon, but it is a very big concern. And. Bill Bauer Park is not really a destination. I mean, it's a destination for us that live up here because we, you know, I know a lot of people walk their dogs through there. But there's no. You know, down at the bottom of the canyon where the head of the trail would be, there's no parking. There's really nowhere to go. That can't be done by the roads that we already have. I mean, I'd love to see another trail down low here that would go into into the Red Rocks open space, but. That's a whole different subject. Um, I want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk about this. I know some of my other friends that live here along the edge of the canyon are also on the waiting list. Um, but thank you. Those are my comments. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Randy. Sure. Right, Jillian?
All right, we have Doug Miles up next.
Doug?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Give us your address, if you would.
Uh, yes, I'm at twenty-three Mountain View Road.
Got it, thank you.
My property is right next to the park. On um, on Mountain View. And I I'll I'll echo, thank you all again for the time you put in. I I know this volunteer work can take up a lot of time and I appreciate your dedication to this. Um, I I'll echo everything everybody else has said here. Um, so I won't spend time. The the one additional issue. Um, is. I I would, I I don't know that, has there been any kind of a plan or a route? Um, kind of informally laid out on where this trail would go, because my concern is logistic. My property goes back al- almost to the edge of the the creek, the wash down there. And then the property drops off eight or ten feet into the the creek bed. So I don't. Uh, you know, I don't think the the trail can come up. The west side of the creek, because I think my property and my neighbor's property go down very close to the stream. Um, I don't know if there's any kind of a plan that would come up the other side and then cross over. But I've I've been down in in the ravine many times with my kids. I've been here for thirty years, thirty-three years. Um, I was here when there was a fire probably fifteen years ago. It was not. It wasn't started by a man. It was a raccoon that got into a transformer. Um, but we all got to see how quickly the fire could spread and. The prevailing wind is mostly off the mountains, so it tends, the the people at risk are really the people on the east side of the ravine. Um, and the fire did. Head up that side of the ravine. Um, came very close to a gentleman who used to live over there who was profoundly deaf and. We had heck of a time getting him notified. Um, so that there's those issues, but. I don't see where the trail would go um, without crossing over private property. Coming very close to private property. Um, or having to cross back and forth across the wash. At the bottom, and it seems to me that this is just. And again, because it doesn't really go anywhere except to the park. Which can be accessed very easily by the road. Um, that the cost of this would just simply not be worth any potential benefit. And then all the negatives that have already been expressed. So. Those are the comments I wanted to make.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
For uh, participating tonight. Let me ask you, do you remember around when that fire was, just roughly with five years ago, ten?
No, no, it it was probably closer to twenty years ago. Um. And of course, it's grown up and uh, you know, Randy's mentioned, there's there's an awful lot of dead wood down in that ravine now, so. Um. Fire caught there, it would be tricky. I mean, we have a great volunteer fire department, but it still took them fifteen minutes to get up here and figure out how to get to the fire. Just to get it out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and last but not least, we have Corey Sutella.
Right.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Corey.
Good evening, Corey Sutella, resident of Manitou Springs. Thank you very much for the chance to speak and. To all of you for your service on OSAC. Um, I'm here tonight speaking in favor of the Bill Bauer connection. Uh, as a taxpayer who has contributed to the OSAC tax that was used to purchase this property, I believe. Um, I also am a stakeholder in this. Also, as a resident, I see it as an extremely valuable connection to be able to. Uh, for me, to be able to uh, hike up to Bill Bauer Park without having to walk up. Uh, Crystal Hills Boulevard. I hope the benefits of that are obvious. Um, also, as a a mountain biker, I would love the chance to be able to ride up through that park. To access uh, some of the trails higher up. Without having to be on the road. Um, I have personally toured that property also with some OSAC members. And there is a feasible uh, trail layout that that a multi-use trail layout that would be compliant with a post plan. And so I'm really excited about the opportunity that we could have a community discussion about this. I mean, I heard. Concerns that this trail might impact wildlife and also that the wildlife might impact users. I think these are, these are things that we should consider. And we should uh, we should. Listen to that input as part of a public process for the city of Manitou, this property. Um. I'm not sure that OSAC. There is uh, there is a. Comment on record with city council, talking about the benefits of this connection as a potential safe for school for. Uh, the residents that live in that area and and the children that would like a a way to be able to get to school without having to get in a car. And this is, there's a really important connection that could be possible because of this. And so this is a really important community discussion. I'm really glad that it's coming up at OSAC. I'm eager to learn more about what the next steps in this process are. And I really want to make sure that everyone's voice is heard. And uh, looking to more communication about this. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Corey. All right, Jillian.
Um, and Dave, we do have a couple more hands that came up. So Darlene Schmer Stewart.
When Darlene.
I'm. One thirty-one Palace.
I'm sorry, Darlene, I interrupted you. I interrupted you. If you could give us your name again and your address, if you would.
Darlene Schmer Stewart, and I'm at one thirty-one Palisade Circle. So I'm across the street from Jess Wilson. And I support her concerns. Um. In seriously support her concerns about the development of this. One, uh, we've only lived in the um, Crystal Hills. For a little less than a year, about a year. And. I think the disruption in the. In the development of this project. For the community as a whole, um, not just the wildlife. We we love open space, but we do have the other. Um, we have the access to the Red Rocks Canyon. Just down the road. So there is that that access and the discussion about where this would go. Um. I I just have a lot of concerns. Fire is a big one. I just moved from Woodland Park. We spent lots of money on mitigation up there and I've had a house burned to the ground. So I understand fire on a personal level. And be quite concerned about uh, fire. Uh, fire issues. Also, I'm not sure about the trail for for children going to school. The bus comes by my house. Every school day and they. My grandchildren who live down this road uh, ride their bikes. Easily to school, so I don't know. easily to school. So I don't know about the school, uh, commentary, but um, kids walk, actually, they, they walk to school from Crystal Hills. So I, I don't think that's a valid issue. So I just want to say I support the people's concerns.
Darlene, thank you for, uh, logging in, participating. Who else?
All right, and we have Jennifer McGrath.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I spoke at the meeting back in October and I live at one five-two Clark'sley Road. And I, I have some of the same concerns as some of the other participants. Um, but I've heard the idea of this trail being used as a route for our kids to walk to school. And I have to say, because of the remoteness of how high it is, there's no visibility as a parent. I would rather them take Crystal Park Road than go down that ravine. And it takes them away from the school. They would essentially have to walk, like the people that live up further in Crystal Hills, they would have to walk further to get to that trail to walk to school. And I just think with the problems that we have with the people on the trails letting their dogs off leash, that's a big concern for me is people walking the trail with their dogs off leash disturbing the wildlife. And there are a lot of homes right by the park that are right by that creek bed. And how is that going to be maintained and mitigated? If those problems should arise, if people are hiking through and disturbing those properties, many of them don't have fences.
Right.
And that's all I had. Uh, most of my con- most of my concerns were very similar to the other people that contribute.
Well, thanks, Jennifer, and thanks, uh, for staying in touch on this. Um, and of course we'll keep, keep it public, whatever we're, whatever we're doing. Jillian, anybody else on that?
Nope, there are no more raised hands.
Okay. Well, then let's close that public participation and let's, um, continue our discussion, um, where this stood previously, uh, at the, uh, the March twenty-four meeting and, um, I was unable to participate in that because I was out of town, um, and couldn't log in. Is that we have a potential survey that's ready to send. Um, and we can send that by the various means that, uh, Cassandra Hessel identified. So I think we just need a, a sense from the committee of what do you guys want to do? Do you want to go ahead and issue that? Is there some other, um, outreach you want to do? What, what's your pleasure on this? Who we getting there? Andrea, are you?
Yeah, um, yeah, this has been an interesting project, um, from its inception. My, my concern here is that the purpose of like purchasing that property that was put forth by Shannon Solomon and kind of on as part of kind of a voice of OSEC, um, was to prevent that property from being developed. Right? So if, if, if that means like, you know, we purchase open space, um, just for the privacy of its very near neighbors, you know, I don't know how compelling that is for like the entire community. So I think we should continue like the conversation, just like I do think we should send the, you know, the survey out. Um, and I think we should take that into account with virtue, future purchases of open space.
Great. Who else got some, some comment? I know I've already spoken a bit on it. But I haven't talked about the survey, but go ahead. Robin, you got something? Do you, or some thoughts on that?
Um, I, I'm thinking, you know, we have the survey ready. Uh, I think to hear from as many people as possible. Uh, I know we, we, we have, uh, you know, the six people tonight and, um, uh, through connection possibly twelve more, but you know, I, I think to get a full, instead of just in a meeting saying, you know, whichever way we think we should go, I, I think we should just go ahead and do the survey and then we'll revisit after that.
I, I'll tell you, I'm inclined to, I mean, we've done the work on the survey. It didn't take that much, but I mean, it's a real data source. Seems like we ought to take advantage of it. It would be my inclination. Who else we got? Paul, you got any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think the survey is, I mean, it's going to give us, you know, maybe some feedback too of, of larger than just the, this property. Um, you know, as, you know, it is always the challenge, everyone, you know, folks in the community want to have trails and trail access, but then oftentimes folks don't want to have those trails close to their properties. So how do you, how do we balance that? And, um, you know, so we just need to gauge what the overall community's, um, you know, feeling is on this section. Um, and then, you know, maybe compare that to other opportunities that we have.
Yeah, take a balance. Yep, Judy?
I think another benefit of doing this survey, no matter where our tendencies is, are, excuse me, is that it allows the community to see that we're not just over here in a box somewhere on Monday nights.
Yeah.
Doing what we're supposed to do, but still not really saying, you know, we need some help here. And I think when you say to people, I need your feedback on this, now the ball's in their court. If they want to do it and respond within a deadline, great. If they don't, great. But the point is they were given the opportunity. And no matter what we think the tendency is, I think it's always good to say, we ask because we do want your input and because we do want you involved. And, and I think I also would think that this survey should be done quickly. I don't think we should drag it out for three months or four months. I think we should say, this is the, you know, this is the survey, please respond by whatever. And then we should set a deadline that's pretty quick.
I know Cassandra's, uh, Cassandra's email, she had said she thought about two weeks was, was appropriate. She said at least two weeks, uh, does that meet your criteria? Two weeks? Okay.
Two or three.
Okay. Who else? Who else we got?
Everybody.
Yeah. Let's go to Cheryl.
Yes, I know when we, uh, spoke about, um, doing a survey or not doing the survey, that, that was one of my comments is that I've, I feel like, you know, it's the whole city that we shouldn't restrict, you know, what, what people were listening to. Um, so, you know, I think these are very valid concerns. So it's a both and situation. I, I hear these concerns and they are very valid. And we decided to do the survey to hear from the whole city if they choose to respond. So I think that's important.
Yeah. And then Robin, last one, last, last word.
No, I, I, I already did. So I, I think I already went.
Okay. Well, I think we need a, a motion then. Uh, it sounds like we need a motion to approve, uh, issuance of that survey. I don't know what the cover letter or the cover paragraph would be. Some instructions, um, just a real brief intro and then some instructions and then a time deadline of at least two weeks. Uh, Cassandra, uh, Hessel from the Public Information Office would be the one to manage that. Um, I think the only decision she's asking, she's asking two decisions from us. One, do we want to authorize this? So I, I think that's our, the consensus here, but I'll, I'll ask for a motion. But the other question she had is, recall that she said she is able to issue, uh, text messages and emails within specific locations within Manitou Springs. If we identify for her what neighborhood we're interested in. And what I'm recalling from the prior meetings is that there was some interest in that for the Crystal Hills neighborhood, meaning bounded by Crystal Park on one side and Red Rock Canyon on the other side. So it would pick up all of Crystal Hills, Clark'sley, uh, Sutherland, Sandra. But again, we need, we need to give her some direction on that. So who would like to? Make a motion so we can focus on it. Go ahead.
I think if we're going to do, you know, a survey, we need to include everyone. My understanding of the conversations was that it would be nice to be able to know, you know, certain areas where like people could say where they lived, like.
It is. That's in, it's in the survey. They need to say what neighborhood they're in and whether they're a resident. Right.
So that's great. And then, so I think if we have that information, then that should be available for everybody.
Okay. So not, don't target the survey would be your sense. Just publish it for all citizens in our community.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Well, I want, I wanted everyone around, around the Bill Bauer Park to, to be sure with all of our busy lives, I think the lot of us citizens don't really see a lot of the surveys that they would like us to answer. And I, I really do want to hear from the people who, who really are around it. Uh, because they would be the ones who are impacted the most. And so that's why I would like to target them so that w- we know that they did see the survey, whether they want to answer or not. And then the other general public, just in, in general, of course, you know, especially all of Manitou. But I really want to make sure that that area, uh, knows that there's a survey and, and I think that, you know, a lot of the neighbors will make sure, but, but still I think that I would like to make sure that we get as many of them as possible.
Okay. Buddy, any other discussion? Otherwise we're going to need a motion to move this along.
I move that we, uh, move, move with the survey and we'll, um, I would say within three weeks.
The survey is going to last three weeks?
Okay.
I, I'm going to say three weeks just because, you know, some people go on vacation for two weeks at a time.
Right. And it's that time of year.
Yeah.
And then do you want to include anything else about targeting, uh, any emails or texts, or you want to leave that off your?
How can that be, how, yeah, well, I, I, how can that be done? Why don't we discuss?
Couldn't. I'm sorry, Cheryl. I just couldn't pick it up. My hearing.
Okay. So I'm just moving that we move on the survey, uh, present it to the whole city and within three weeks.
Keep it open.
From the, yeah, keep it open for three weeks. And then, so then let's discuss.
Okay. So that's the motion. So this is the more, this is the more limited motion. Thank you, Cheryl. We need a second. Who would second that? That's from Judy. I see a second. Okay. So, so any more discussion on that? Authorizing the survey as we previously, uh, approved it, you know, we approved the outline of it. Uh, hold it open for three weeks and instruct Cassandra to, uh, do the notifications on a, uh, Manitou-wide basis. No targeting. So that's the motion. Any more? Discussion. I know I've, I've heard Robin's opinion. Anybody else? Knock that around? Or do you want to vote?
Um, I mean, I, I'm open to discussing about how to do that text of that neighborhood. I just don't know. I mean, what's, what's possible?
Well, Cassandra did say that, that she is able to, to, um,
Target.
Can target a, a specific area. So we'll just leave it up to Cassandra. And, you know, if someone gets a, a, an email from the city that they're really kind of outside, you know, I, I, if she can target, I would say let her do it.
Well, I mean, can it, if it's going to be an email, it's being sent out by email, is that correct?
Yes.
So in the address line, you might say something about this park, which is in this neighborhood, whatever. Um, but since we're sending it to everybody, I mean, I'm not sure other than that, just to bring.
Let me, let me recast it a bit. Cassandra's, the, the minimum approval that we're talking about is she would do, and I'm, I'm reading from her news, from her email. She would do a news release. She would do a social media blast on the, the city's, uh, social media presence. She would include it in the city's new weekly newsletter. She would post it on the city's website. That's, that's the minimum that she would do. The alt, the, the addition is, and I'll quote it here, through our alert system, so this is for people who have signed up for alerts, we can send out isolated text emails to notify specific areas within Manitou Springs as well. I just need from you an idea of those locations. So that's, that's what she can do using the alert system. So if you haven't signed up for it, you wouldn't get it. And it's only if we authorize, uh, and, and for discussion, I'll say we authorize the Crystal Hills, you know, Mesa, that plateau. The valleys leading up to it, but, but that's the alternative. Well, I think we, I'm really committed to move this along, guys. We've been at it for, for a number of months and, uh, the consensus is let's at least authorize the survey. I don't want to get hung up on whether we do the email prod. Um, again, I think the neighbors in the, in the community, as Robin said, are most likely going to talk to their other neighbors. But Robin, back to you. What, what else?
And I, can I make a motion to, uh, have Cassandra target through email the area in Crystal Hills around that, that, uh, property?
Hey, you can, but not quite yet. Hang on to that. We got to approve this first motion because we've got one on the floor. So I think it makes sense to go ahead and call the question on the motion to authorize the survey, hold it open for three weeks. And this is a non-targeted, this is, uh, citywide on the news release, social media blast, weekly newsletter, website. So let's, let's vote. All in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Okay, okay. We got five on that. Thank you. Five out of five to approve that. And then Robin, you want to go ahead and make your motion that we've also, in addition, authorized Cassandra to do the alert system for the Crystal Hills, the larger, I'm going to call it the larger Crystal Hills neighborhood. Was that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second on that or not?
I'll second that one too.
Judy's got a second on that. Okay. Any questions on that motion or is that, I think we've probably talked about it enough?
So does that mean that the whole city will have the opportunity to do the survey, but only the people in that neighborhood will get the notifications through the whatever system?
That's, that is correct.
Why wouldn't we just push that out to the whole entire city and maybe twice to that neighborhood?
You know, Jillian, you got any thoughts on that? I, I'm not familiar with the alert system myself, guys, but I don't know, Jillian, any?
Couple thoughts. The alert system is designed for emergencies and I, I know we can use it, but I don't, I don't know. I think if we properly advertise the survey to the entire community, it will get out there and we'll make sure that the Crystal Hills neighborhood, um, has access to the survey, survey as well as the rest of Manitou. I just, I don't want to abuse the alert system for the survey, um, because it is designed for emergencies. And I would not consider this survey an emergency. That's my perspective. Um, I think we could do a really good job promoting the survey without using the alert system. Um, but I, you know, would love to hear OSEC's thoughts on that also.
Okay.
It, I mean, it, it seems like we, I mean, we have a fair number of local residents are, are obviously aware of this. Um, it, it came here to comment. So I think that certainly even on, on their part, I'm sure they're going to help promote this to the local community. So, um, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I'm open to anything we can do to help promote it to the local area, but also believe it should just go out to the whole community.
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah, Judy?
People that spoke tonight, the people that spoke tonight, you, you, do you have their, Jillian, do you have their email addresses? Is that how they signed up?
Uh, I have a few of their email addresses from previous email correspondence, but anyone can join the, the OSEC Zoom meeting just from their computer. So I don't have everyone's email who's on tonight.
So would it be improper for you to send out a notice letting them know what we're doing and to watch for it? Because what I think, I think we're, we're inching up to the place we need to be. Once that group of six knows what's coming, you can bet the whole Crystal Hills neighborhood, that guy was down, one of those guys was down on Mountain View. So you'll, they'll all know to go for it.
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable. I'll know about it too.
Yeah.
They should. They should. They're going to, they're going to continue to monitor it. They may be listening right now as they might well be because we haven't ended this item. So
I'll just walk.
They're going to, they're going to pursue it. Yeah, we still have thirteen particip- participants. So, yeah, I think we're in good shape.
Yeah.
So can I, can I withdraw my mo- motion?
You can. Yeah. I don't think we had a second. No, we did. Judy, can she withdraw that?
Lovely.
Okay. All right. So then we've got, uh, we will authorize Cassandra, excuse me, Hessel Okay, alright, so then we've got, uh, we will authorize Cassandra, excuse me, Hessel to, to issue the survey, uh, with an appropriate intro and a three-week deadline. And um, no, we will not be utilizing the alert system, okay? Good, it'll be interesting to see the responses. And I don't know if we'll have them by our next meeting, uh, we certainly will by June. And if we get them out earlier, I'll make sure to circulate them to the committee so you guys can look at them and, you know, think about it, so you're not just doing it on two days ahead of our meeting. Alright, I think we're gonna leave, uh, Bill Bauer, is that alright? Any more comments? Okay, thank you. Uh, on trail maintenance, um, I'm gonna move this along a bit. Um, the Manitou Cats did do the Wildcat Gulch Repair on April thirteenth, uh, Paul and I participated in that. Uh, we've got some photos, uh, they were taken a little later in the day when we, um so I hope you can get the context of where they are. Uh, I do have to say that Jillian was AWOL on that day, uh, she had uh some park emergency. Took her elsewhere, so she did not get any dirt on her gloves or her pants, um.
She, she was ready to go though.
She was ready, she, or at least
You know, I was in Fountain Creek that day, digging signs out of the creek, so I still got dirty, I just wasn't on the trail.
Actually, I, I, I wouldn't mind if you'd give us a half minute on Fields Park, uh, the reason was the damage to the artwork in Fields Park, what, um any, any movement on that?
Yeah, so just in case anyone's not aware, the night before we had the Trail Work Day on April thirteenth, we had um pretty significant vandalism along Creek Walk Trail going through Fields Park. Every Art Walk sign was ripped off the post, thrown into the creek, we did recover all of them. Uh, there was one at the end that survived actually, so that was, I guess, a silver lining. Um, other park signs were ripped out of the ground, we had dog waste dispensers destroyed and thrown into the creek. So just a really nasty vandalism incident, and we did report it to MSPD. Um, so right now they're handling the report, uh, and Parks is working with Crane to get some of the signs replaced back along the creek. Uh, but the artwork that was thrown into the creek was destroyed, we, we can't put it back up, unfortunately.
And what is Crane? I, I didn't ring a bell with me.
Uh, it's the Manitou C- Creative Arts District, I forget exactly what the acronym stands for. Um, but they, they've partnered with Parib to put those Art Walk signs along Creek Walk Trail through Fields Park.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, uh, and then Jillian, if you can continue, um we've got the REMFE contract, remember, we authorized the last year, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we have three weeks of work from a REMFE crew. And um, so we need to allocate that energy somewhere, uh, appropriate. And we had a couple of ideas, um, Jillian, why don't you take it from there if you would? And by the way, we're on, in the packet, guys, we're on page, um, fourteen.
Yeah, so the project we've identified this year with REMFE is a short reroute of the Intiman Trail as it connects to the Red Mountain Trailhead. So if you guys are familiar with the Intiman going up to Red Mountain, you're familiar with that very steep section right before you get to the Red Mountain Trailhead. So we've worked with the property owner. Uh, I'm not great with directions. The property owner to the west of that very steep section who's allowed us to do, it's about a four hundred and twenty-foot reroute from the trailhead back down to the Intiman Trail, uh, that REMFE is gonna be able to do. Just to make it more sustainable and safe for our hikers and bikers, so we don't have to have folks going up and down that really steep connector section. So right now, that's the project, the main project we've identified. Um, and REMFE will start May fourteenth, so just in a, in a couple of weeks.
And, and our are we, I always get this confused, are we, can we volunteer to help? Or there's, this is just REMFE working?
It's mainly REMFE, they will host at least one volunteer day, which I'll make sure that everyone's aware of. It's, they're typically on Saturdays, um, and anyone can come out and volunteer and help with the project. Which I think it'd be great to have some OSAC members out there.
Yeah, if you'd publicize that, that would be a big help. While we were I, I, I think what we need to do, well, I don't know. This evolved really quickly, and uh, i- if anyone has any strong objection to REMFE doing this, you need to say so now. Because this is moving really quickly. I, I will tell you, I, I just assumed REMFE was gonna be working for us in the summer like they did last year, actually somewhat late summer. And all of a sudden it's May, uh, so this, uh, this was a surprise to me too, so I sent a few emails out. Um, certainly to make sure Paul and Andrea were aware of this idea, because it was just moving so darn fast. It certainly would be a very pleasant reroute, um. Because it's in the trees, on the edge of the trees in the meadow there, uh, it's certainly an easier grade to climb. Uh, if you're, if you're biking or hiking, if you're hiking, when you come down this section, it's pretty darn slippery. Um, because you're on bedrock, uh, or eroding sandstone is what it is, and uh while we were there, uh, last week, uh, even you, we saw one hiker go down, you could see how uh tentative she was in her descent, because it just, and so were we, that's just the way it is. The, um, so again, you gotta speak loudly if you think this is inappropriate. Anybody got a comment on that? Okay. While we were doing this though, Paul identified another segment that we really need to address. And I don't think we included a map of it, although Paul sent it to me, so I apologize, cuz we'd need to get it on our list. Paul, can you describe where that is, so we can just kind of begin to alert the committee, this is an area of maintenance we're gonna wanna address in the future?
Sure, uh. Let's see.
A- actually, I'll find it and I can maybe share my screen, or you can, Paul, if you find it first. I'm gonna go look for it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to look at a map here to, so as you come up of, uh well, basically, Iron Mountain Trail, we, there's this, the spur, the summit that goes up to Iron Mountain, and actually, can I share my screen? Does that work?
You should be able to, Paul, as a panelist.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
And Dave, just so you know, Andrea has her hand raised.
Okay, thank you, I'm, cuz I'm, I'm looking elsewhere right now. Oh, there we go. Okay. Andrea, you need to jump in now, or do you, or, or wait for Paul? What's your pleasure?
Um, I'll just jump in before you guys get into it, um, my comment was just about, um uh, we, we did this big, you know, trail reroute of, um, the Intiman a while back, and, um, the whole restoration of the uh, decommission portion of the trail was quite a process as well. Um, so I just wanna make sure we pay attention to that, and I, and I know that, um that that, that the, that the, the original road portion would stay there because of right away, something.
Well, emergency mainly, fire, fire and emergency.
Yeah, so there wouldn't be any mitigation to the existing trail in that area, it would remain a double track for fire access.
Yeah, okay.
This section here, descending from Iron Mountain, um, it follows an old roadbed and that roadbed's kind of can cave or become, uh, sunk in. And so the water really can travel this whole length of this trail, um. This section over here has a little bit of that too, this is the, this is the area where we did the, you did the work, um for the erosion that's coming off of the Crystal Lake, this fire, this is the fire road that, from the community. Um, so that issue that we had in this area is something that we could experience along this section if we don't do some work to get water off the trail occasionally. So it's just so- something we could put on our list, uh, some that, we could do some volunteer projects to try to help get water off. Um, or it could be a, a future project as well for REMFE.
This is the, uh, the road that Tom McGee bulldozed, that was a part of the city lawsuit, that shut that down back in oh-six, oh-seven, oh-eight. And, uh, as, as Paul points out, the road never pitches to the outside. Uh, and so it's become incised, and so the water is all bound within the side. The outslope side is, uh, a barrier, and there's not a single drain that blows through that wall, and so the water just keeps flowing. And, uh, it's starting to, to, um, to dig in more so, so we, we just gotta put it on our list of doing this sooner than later.
Is, is this a project that my, that the youth court could do?
I don't know. Do we have any youth corps time, Jillian? Youth corps?
We, we don't have them on the schedule for this year, I could reach out to see if they have any crews available. I know last year we had a, a grant that we matched, and we were able to get them to do some work. Um, but we don't have that this year.
Do you know how much that was offhand? Do you remember? I mean, was it in the scale of fifteen thousand or thirty or?
I would need to look it up, Dave, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay. If that's, can you put that on your soft list? That, I mean, that's worth an inquiry. Just to figure it out, yeah. Cuz we, we have the maintenance dollars to spend if we need to, if it's an appropriate project. Yeah, Paul, that really shows it, doesn't it?
Yeah, this is a ravine, and as the water comes here, the water can't actually continue down the ravine, it's getting picked up by the, the, the roadbed. Uh, the water to the left up here is coming down as well, and you can just see how chunky all this gravel from when it does rain, all that sediment, you know, just is, this is, uh, you know, I don't know, for me, this isn't the best section to hike, um. And, you know, riding up it on a bike's a little challenging cuz it's loose, um. But the, the concern is just over time, you get one big rainstorm and all that water's now channeled down this. Um, so, anyway.
Okay. Let's keep it on our, on our list, or high on our list. Uh, Jillian, how about signage on, um, some, some of the trails? How are we coming?
So we're still waiting on the signs we ordered from our sign company, they're, they're just delayed, so once we get them, we can put them up. We did, Dave, I don't know if you saw this, we did put a wayfinding sign up on Intiman before it drops down to the cemetery, and there's that trail on the left that leads down to the high school.
Yeah.
Um, we put a little sign there just to keep folks on the Intiman Trail in case they're confused when they get to that small intersection, so we got one up. Um, but we are waiting, just waiting on our other materials, and that's where we are with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, I'd like to move on to the rezoning on the open space parcels that did go before council, um. It was approved, uh, but there was one parcel that was, uh, pulled out, and Jillian, can you give us an update? Tell us where that one is.
Yeah, I, I'm sure some of the council members or committee members remember Zero Becker's Lane. The small one-acre parcel of open space, uh, right across Becker's Lane from Fields Park. That parcel, we had, OSAC had voted to give to Parks to be rezoned as parkland. Um, because it kinda makes sense, it's right next to Fields Park, et cetera. Council did not approve the rezoning to park, they want to leave it as open space. Uh, I think one of the concerns was, they were concerned about too much development near the creek. And they felt keeping it open space would prevent too much development, and that is my understanding of their decision right now. I wasn't at the meeting, I need, I need to watch that section, um, but, but out of all of the parcels, that was the one that did not get approved to be rezoned as park, and it remains open space.
Well, and the others were being rezoned to open space, okay?
Correct.
Okay. Well, you have to applaud their attention to detail.
What does that mean though? Does that just mean that Parks Lake doesn't take care of it? Cuz I mean, we don't, that is not what our role is, is to be caretaking that stuff either, you know?
Right, so right now, what I've instructed my team to do, so we've already removed the fence, the big chain link fence that separated the property. We are going to do noxious weed mitigation on the property, it was a pretty disturbed site before. Lots of construction equipment, so there's quite a few weeds out there we wanna mitigate. Um, picking up trash, checking the area for transient activity. Beyond that, we don't have any other plan for the property besides keeping an eye on it and removing the noxious weeds. But it's not a property we're gonna mow or, uh, grow turf on at this time.
Yeah, but I, I think, you know, that exchange there between Andrea and Jillian raises the question of what's our, what's the committee's responsibility to that parcel? Do we need to somehow keep an eye on it? Is that just a normal piece of open space? It's just that it's so visible, public adjacent to the park? It's kinda like, council, what do you want us to do? Tell us tell us or tell Jillian what you want done on that parcel. It sounds like, as you say, you're very limited. Maintenance. Keep it natural? I don't know.
Well, and something I need to learn more about is what we can do on open space properties versus park properties. So maybe we could keep this on the agenda, Dave, for next month. Um, and I'm happy to, to kinda provide a list of what can be done on open spaces versus park. And then we could see what options are. Um, I also believe OSAC has some noxious weed mitigation funding pockets, if I remember right, and that might be something I ask for in the future. Um, it's a small property, so it shouldn't be a big ask, but it might be something we could use OSAC's support on.
Okay, but, but yeah, let's pursue that for next meeting then, for sure.
I, I have a question to add to the list. If we've got this parcel back, cuz I know when we were out there, we talked about this. Is what is our liability along the creek?
What's the city's liability?
It's the city's liability. But we're supposed to watch it. Because that was a big, when we hiked this, or looked, guys, not hiked, but walked it. Uh, that was a slippery slope. Even then, and I don't know if that means we need to put, post a sign saying slippery slope. Or ignore it, or we need to do something about it. I, I just don't know what we're supposed to be doing here, and I, I wanted to add that to the list of, we don't know.
Well, I don't think it's any different than the section of creek that runs through, uh, Fields Park or Memorial Park. It, it would be the same level of liability, um. It, it's nothing, there's nothing hidden, there aren't any hidden hazards there, uh, there are no mine shafts or
Well, actually, there's the bridge. And there's a
Bridge, yeah.
There's a tunnel, there's kind of a, I know when, when we were out there, we were talking about, this would be a great place for some kids to get in trouble. And I, I don't know that, I, I mean, I was, you would get rid of it, it might be a great issue, but apparently not.
But wouldn't the city have like a standard kind of feeling on that because of the creek access throughout the whole town?
I think so, I just, I'm just asking the question, I would like it asked of city, just so we know, you know, if we're supposed to be doing something down there or not. I mean, because it's an isolated, a more isolated, in the sense that it's not well-used, it's not well-known, I could see some kids getting in there.
Well, the fence is gone, so it's open. No different now than the
The fence wasn't on the creeks, on the creek edge, it was on the other side of the long side of the property.
Yeah, it was closer to the, uh, concrete trail, the Creek Walk Trail.
Whatever's over there.
I think.
I'm just, I'm just
Well, I'll make sure it's on the list. Okay. Anything else on that, on the open space parcels, rezoning? Okay. On fire mitigation, um, Jillian had updated us already really on this process. Um, so we'll follow up by the next meeting, at least with some more process information. But we do have a community wildfire protection plan and the open space segments. Um, Mike Willie is really, um, inviting any comments, uh, from any of us as citizens or from us as the committee. We're not required to, to opine, uh, or issue anything, uh, but we certainly have the opportunity to do it. Was there anything that jumped out at any of you that was appro- inappropriate? Was there anything that jumped out at any of you that was appro- inappropriate or something you want clarified or you want Mike to amplify? I thought it was pretty well done. Yeah, Judy, what'd you think?
Um I, I, I think it's a great base to start from. Um but I know we as a committee had talked about this idea. Of finding those parcels that we're, we're responsible for. That adjoin private property and trying to develop some kind of a program to get. Neighbors of those properties to help us. And uh that was the discussion that led to asking Mike about the home ignition zone pamphlet. Which you all have, I hope, I hope everybody's got this. Um because this was Mike Willie's response. He said, this is what I know is handed out. And of course, it's not from Manitou. It's from, it goes, it's all over the state. Colorado State Forest Service, and that's what they use to help homeowners mitigate. But our discussion was, as I recall, to help homeowners. Say, to say to them, well, you know, this parcel next to you that you like and it's vacant and it's gives you some more privacy and blah, blah, blah. Could you help us mitigate it by, by here's a pamphlet? We would appreciate knowing if you're interested in helping. I don't, I know we have a lot of parcels like that and I don't know how you'd even start, but this was, this was Mike's response. And I think it's a good jumping off point. And I don't know if that means we should have a discussion about printing this up and distributing it somehow. Getting it in the Pike's Peak Bulletin, which I think would be awesome, except not everybody reads the bulletin. I really, I really don't know, but I think, you know, as we dry out, and this has been a very dry April, very dry. Um I think it's a huge concern and not just side properties, but all these properties that OSAC is. Involved in. And yes, where do you start? Mike says, well, he's given you a list here on that other packet. But I think this idea of getting homeowners involved, and he, he has talked about this quite a bit, about inviting homeowners. To a demonstration. Where they have mitigated and he can show people how they have, um you know, he talks about this in this homeowner thing. How, and also in the other packet, he talks about how. They don't expect people to just wipe out all the trees because they're highly flammable. But what they do try to do, and that's what happened up at the water tank. The day of the fire is they had just finished mitigating and they were able to get their equipment in there. Because they had made isolated pockets of, of trees so they could get around them. And also so it would slow down the fire. It wouldn't be jumping so much from one, just, you know, a, a whole forest full of, of scrub oak. Or whatever.
Judy, Judy, can you put that pamphlet up next to your camera? Because I couldn't catch the title and I think I missed it.
It was, yeah, it was one of the, uh, uh, um, the, one of the.
The home ignition zone. Okay, thank you.
It's not, it was the attack, it was an attachment.
Okay.
And I'm just, I'm really pleased that he was able to help us. And I think we, it's a great pamphlet. It's very specific. It has great photographs, even in black and white. I didn't bother to use color, but. Um I just hope we do something with this because I don't know about the rest of you, but. Yeah, I think this is gonna be a rough summer unless we get a snowstorm in July.
I know Paul brought up the same topic um one or two meetings ago of how, how do we deal with these little pocket parcels?
Yeah. But I, I really like the idea of the fire department leading the, the charge initially. Because getting people to a demonstration site, I think is great. Because they can see, you can, you can tell in these pictures even, you can see the difference between an unmitigated home. Where, or where they, and a mitigated home where they understand the zone and hardness in the home and all that stuff. I mean, it's obvious that it helps. And I think, isn't the rule of thumb that they will not defend a home that is not defensible?
Yeah, I think so.
They, because of the liability risks to themselves, and I think.
Yeah, if it's a big enough fire, they've got to make decisions. Well, let me, let me throw one out here. Um Robin and I met not long ago um to catch up on some stuff. And Robin threw out the triangular parcel on Sunshine Trail and Washington Boulevard. It's totally accessible. It's surrounded by Washington Avenue and Sunshine. There are no houses that border it. It's bordered by those two roads. Those roads form a triangle. It's uh behind the Seven Minute Spring up toward the highway.
Well, there are, there are a couple houses along, along one of the boundary there.
Okay. But it, it's so accessible. If you, if we wanted to do a demonstration project with a fire department. That would be an obvious one because it's very visible. It's totally accessible. It can accommodate a number of people. Um the neighborhood is not too big, uh about sixteen, twenty homes there. Um it's just gonna take some manpower. It's gonna take our energy to, to do that. And, and maybe the suns, Sunshine Trail is not the, the right one, but Robin suggested it and uh. It's, it's accessible, but there could be another small demonstr- well, I'm sure there are, you know, these open space parcels are all over town. So we could find maybe four.
Or maybe Mike has a project that they've done. That he could get out there and say, here's the pictures of what it loo- looked like before. And this is what we did, pictures maybe. And then this is how it looks. Why is this important? Because it's defensible. We can get our equipment in there. We can get, uh whatever. We can get there quickly. I mean, um it's been really great working with them. And I don't know, Jillian, do you have some phenomenal idea about how this could get out to the public? To the citizens of Manitou, this, this thing? Because I think, I think if I got this in my hands through an email as an attachment, that would spark my interest. Oh, what a bad pun. Oh, I don't believe I said, oh.
I think that'd be a good thing to talk about with the fire department and Cassandra, our public information officer. How to best get that brochure out there. Um. They, I'm sure they would have some good ideas.
Okay, who, who would like to do that? Yep, I thought so. Judy, I can join you on that one.
Okay.
Okay. Any um what, what I'd like to do is ask Mike about a couple of demonstration parcels of these small pocket. Open space parcels to, is that, is that all right with the rest of you if Judy and I have that conversation? Is that okay? Okay, see if we can. Is, it's a traction on that. Okay. All right, Judy, I'll follow up with you.
Okay, great.
We'll, we'll get that scheduled. Any other comments on that? Community wildfire, wildfire protection.
I, I do have a question in general about this whole thing with the fire department. Is, is it our purview then to say, well, yeah, okay, we want to go ahead. He listed, you know, that whole list of parcels he's talking about, including obviously Black Canyon. Um. What's the next step?
On which?
That's what I'm saying. Do we choose one and say, okay, we're gonna get going on this? How do we, what's our next step? Do we, the first thing, we choose one?
Well, no, the, the next step right now, based on the conversations we've had previously and this meeting today and Jillian's comments. Is that Jillian's gonna work with Mike, most likely focusing on Black Canyon open space. Unless Mike nominates another parcel as having a higher priority. And solicit some uh proposals.
Okay.
Uh we could talk with Mike about that when you and I meet with him, just to keep that prod going.
When we last, when Mike and I last talked, that was his pick.
Yeah, I thought so. Yeah, I don't think there's any retraction on that or any, no one's suggesting uh changing that. For a higher priority, but there is not a, for, for Mike's view, there is not a higher priority. Where we are. Okay. If you do have any individual comments though, don't hesitate to send an email to Mike or to Cassandra, whatever that response is. Cause I really are asking for input. My understanding is the uh city council needs to adopt this plan. And that will help qualify the city for some grants. That Mike and perhaps Jillian and others are gonna be working on. So it's a very important step in that process. Um last, I think, well, it's not quite last, is. The issue of money. When I met with uh Mayor John uh about three weeks ago. And uh we talked about fire mitigation and the issue of potentially using OSAC funding. Our maintenance funds for fire mitigation. Um because there's just not a lot, particularly with sales tax potentially declining with marijuana sales going down due to Colorado Springs adoption. The city is very cautious on its budget this year for twenty twenty-five. Um and just gonna have to see what happens for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um that affects our budget too. But we don't have any open space acquisition parcels, parcels in the hopper right now. So I, I think it's appropriate that we need to take um everyone's opinion on using some of OSAC funds. As grant matches. I don't know the scale of this, but we're probably talking twenty, fifty thousand for sure. As grant matches to do fire mitigation, large scale fire mitigation projects on. Open space parcels. So what, what's your pleasure? It strikes me as it's an appropriate maintenance use. It's gonna come up now, come up again in seven years or ten. Next time we need to do it again. I don't know. But some of you have more history than I do, but what are your thoughts on that? Yeah, Andrea, please, you've been around. You know this stuff.
Yeah, we, we definitely have um uh used OSAC funds. The city has to uh to do fire mitigation. Um some of it probably was maybe. Uh leveraged with Mile High Youth Corps or GoCo grants to hire Mile Co- or High Youth Corps to do some of that. Um so I, I, I would agree that this is in the purview of spending and sec funding for sure. It's part of maintaining our o- open spaces, I think.
Robin, who are you fighting with there?
I have Zuko. He's, he's two years old, so. He's uh, I was gonna start a YouTube channel for Zuko alone.
I just thought how brave you are, a, a black dog on a white sweater. You are something. Yeah, that's.
Open washroom.
Uh you know, if, if we do any open uh matches, grant matches, um that'll bubble up through Mike or Jillian. Coming back to the committee to make a, a recommendation for approval. So this will come back again. I ju- I think we should let them know that, you know, we're certainly amenable to that. That's appropriate. It's a maintenance expense. So we'll, we'll take that step unless somebody objects. Okay. All right. Thank you for your input on that. Jillian, I think any uh any additional matters on your agenda, your list?
We've, we've covered pretty much everything on my list, but I do want to mention that I had a really good discussion. Maybe a month ago with Corey and Carl from the Mobility and Parking Board. Who kind of talked about being more involved with OSAC, kind of in the same vein as OSAC and Parib. Keep in touch um by sharing their agendas and sharing their minutes with each other. Because a lot of our, well, some of our OSAC discussions do revolve around mobility. Um I think one of the ones that could be highlighted could be the potential trail through Bill Bowers. Um there are any involvement with other trail systems that connect to mobility hubs. Or the mobility um aspect of getting to Black Canyon open space. So I don't know what that would look like in the future. Um if it's adding a map board report to the OSAC agenda. Similar to how we have the Parib report on there. Um or just keeping an eye on the map board agenda to see if there's anything related to trails on there. But they, they would like to be more involved. So I wanted to share that with the committee.
What is Carl's name?
Well, Stang. It's Carl with a K. And then Corey Sutella and Corey is the chair.
Okay.
And I think Carl is the vice chair.
Charge of vice. Okay.
Okay. I, I will listen for that then. Okay.
What is the map board?
Mobility, M A P.
Mobility and parking.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you. Jeepers.
Well, from reading the paper, I can tell you, it seems to me that the map board is far more consumed with parking than they are with mobility these days. They have their hands full. I, I know it's on their purview to also focus on mobility, but.
Um and Dave, we actually have Corey with his hand raised, so I'm gonna allow him to talk on this.
Okay, well, Corey, we're gonna wrap this up pretty quickly, so this is not. Uh it's not your podium for the next ten minutes. Let's, give us a quick one. Okay?
Okay, can I have nine and a half?
No.
Yeah, I, I do just want to say, you know, um, you know, the Mobility and Parking Board would like to improve our connection with OSAC. And uh, and collaboration. Uh and there are, it seems like there is a lot of overlap with. Um mobility and consideration of trails. And I do want to let you know that. I mean, we are the Mobility and Parking Board and a lot of the business that comes to us is parking. But there are a lot of people that are really interested in mobility and finding ways that we can get, you know, help people. We like to say like, get out of being trapped in their cars. We're not trying to force people out of their cars. But if we could find ways for people to get around Manitou and be part of the community of Manitou without needing to be in their cars. That's a really high priority for us on the board. So um ma- maybe it doesn't always make the papers, but that is a high priority for us. And uh open for any collaboration with OSAC and again, thank you for all your uh volunteerism.
Okay, well, then we need to watch for some opportunities then. Okay. Um our next meeting is May twenty-sixth, which is Memorial Day. And uh I forget, I think it was the city clerk who brought that to my attention, saying we might want to change that. Um that is Monday, the fourth Monday is the um, the fourth or the third. It's the fourth Monday is the twenty-sixth. We're free to change that. We just need to do it in advance. What's the pleasure of the, of the committee? What do you guys want to do? I. I am open.
Right, you're, you're off that day, right?
I'm sorry, Judy? What?
Jillian's probably not available.
Uh I am off that day and would prefer to be off that day, but I'll, I'll do whatever you guys want.
No.
Well, thank you, but it's nice to, it's nice to have time off. Um. Is there another day of the week, of that week, the twenty-sixth? Um I'm pretty open. Jillian, uh what are your, do you take care of the M A P board also?
No, the other board I sit on as staff liaison is Parib and they meet the first Monday of every month. So the only day I wouldn't be available if you reschedule it is uh June second. Cause that's Parib's monthly meeting.
What uh, what about Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, that evening? Is that a problem? Would that work for people or not? What do you think? I'm just throwing it out. Robin, thank you. Cheryl, that could work? Okay. Tuesday, the twenty-seventh at six P M. Could we shift from the twenty-sixth to the twenty-seventh?
Cheryl's waving her hand.
I'm, I'm sorry, kidding.
Um I would have to be virtual. I, I'm going to be gone most likely.
Okay.
And is that, I mean, you skipped over something about mixed meeting format?
Yeah, I, I'm so frustrated with this Zoom, I could spit. Um I really. I, I mean, you know, even this evening, there were a couple of times where one of you had to say Andrea has her hand up or Judy would like to say something just cause. In a meeting, you can see that so much better. I'd, I'd love to do either the May meeting uh or June, a, a mixed format. But only if that works for you guys, because you know, the. The greater participation we have, the better, more effective we're gonna be. But um there are at least a couple of rooms in the city um or in the M A C. Where we could meet in person for those who can make it and we can zoom in uh the public and uh any uh other members. I'd like to try it. Uh I'd ask you to let me try it, see if that works. Um I just think we'd, we would work better if we were in person. Um, I just think we'd, we would work better if we were in person. But sometimes, sometimes Zoom is awfully convenient and Cheryl's a good example because she's gonna be able to participate, but she only, only by Zoom on that meeting. So why don't I try to do that? Try to do an in-person on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, although is there any objection to that date? Tuesday.
I'd, I'd rather not do Tuesdays.
Okay.
I have a previous, I mean, if I, if I'm here, I would do the other commitment. If I'm not here, you know, it wouldn't matter, but
Yeah.
I'd like to keep it open.
Okay, but actually let me ask you about this one though, Cheryl. Um, we're not talking about changing, this is just for this particular week.
Right.
And whether that works for you, but if it doesn't, just say so. We'll look another day. We've got Wednesday, Thursday. What? What works?
Wednes- Wednesday would work better for me, but that's up to you guys.
Yeah, anybody else? I can make Wednesday work. Robin, what do you think I say? Okay, twenty-eighth, Judy? Okay.
What time?
We will move the, the May OSAC meeting from the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth. It'll be at six P M. If I can pull off, uh, in person, um, and I'll, I'll check with you guys, uh, by email individually. And if I can get enough people to do that and find a place, then we'll do it in person and Zoom. But if it doesn't work, that there are not enough of you who can do it, that's okay. We'll try to, try it in, uh, in June. Okay. Now, thank you Cheryl for reminding me of that, cause that's something I really wanted to talk about. I think that's everything. Anything else on anyone's notes that we missed or you wanted to bring up? I don't think so. Um, some places ask for a motion. I don't think we need a motion if no one has anything to raise. Okay. Well, thank you. Well, we still took almost two hours. I'd really like to do this at an hour and a half.
Um, they all have to talk faster.
Uh, talk less, talk faster. Yes, ma'am. And, uh, but we did have some good public participation and that took about fifteen minutes and that was time well spent. Uh, as Judy said, um, public perception really matters. Uh, Judy, I will follow up with you on Mike Willie. Uh, Jillian has her list.
Um,
And the rest of you need to get out on our trails and, um, and open space and, uh, bring to the committee any comments you have, any, anything that needs attention.
Dave, Dave, do you want, you want me to go ahead and check with Mike just to see what his schedule is?
Yes, if you would do that, that would be great. Okay. All right, guys. Thanks. Uh, very good meeting. Uh, we made some decisions, got some stuff done. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.